I like oatmeal raisin. I'll take those two over a chocolate chip every time. Same with them just because I had two older brothers and they would get all the other.
My son said he dropped it off, but I didn't see it. That's better.
No dessert either for me.
No cookie until you eat your vegetables.
Like riding a bike. Times you follow. Get back up.
Like I'm checking. Okay, first item up, adoption and modification of agenda. If there is no modification of agenda, I would entertain them to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is this where I modify the consent?
I think. Or it's or do we do it in eight point O? Karen, do we do it at eight point O or seven point?
Uh, we're gonna do it in uh seven point one. But it does, it does not require a vote.
No.
It does not require a vote. So, adoption, modification of the agenda will do in seven point ones.
Um, I just wanna move. Sorry, my papers are all bearing. Only for discussion, for public discussion. Um, eight point. Four. Uh, eight point five. I'm sorry. Eight point seven and eight eleven. Eight point four, eight point five, eight point seven, and eight point eleven?
Yes.
We'll be moved to new business.
We'll all move them into new business. Can I do that first and then?
Yes, we're gonna take a minute, a minute. So bear with us, please. Well, welcome to your first meeting, by the way.
So now, approved control service contract, that's eight point four. Eight point five is approved comprehensive assessment plan. Eight point six is. The children's service contracted. Eight point seven is wellness. And personnel eight point eight.
You said wellness is eight point eight.
Wellness is eight point seven.
Eight point seven.
Personnel's eight point eight.
And then, new business is eleven point, did you just start with eleven point five?
Yes, but I'll give you those exact ones. MSBA policy DFI is eleven point five. Del Seater Springs tuition contract is eleven point six. Missouri State Dual Credit is eleven point seven and. Oh, did it? Okay. Alright. During.
Yeah, if you're fresh, it'll update.
I'm ready. There we go.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt the modified agenda? As presented.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Next item, eight point zero approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of regular session minutes from July seventeenth. Updated board retreat minutes from June twenty second. Bills for payment for August of twenty twenty four. Control services contract. The twenty-four, twenty-five comprehensive assessment. The CCC SF contracted services agreement. The wellness services agreement and the personnel report. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second. Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Karen, do I need to abstain? My mom's statement is on there, but it's not for. I'll just abstain.
Yeah, just abstain, just in case.
Yep, that's it.
Motion carries. Next item, comments from the audience. Snow. And next up. Uh, correspond.
Yes, you will see in your packet a note from Jill Billings, who's one of our staff members who recently lost her mother. She was thanking us in your donation to the All-Timers Association in her mother's name. So just a. Thank you for the board's generous contribution.
Right. Next up, nine point three Superintendent Up.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to start by inviting all of our board members to come up to the front as we celebrate one of our staffs today. So if you guys wouldn't mind coming up front. When I come to the side. Short wire. I'd like to start by recognizing our Maple Elementary School for their recognition with positive behavior intervention and support. This was actually awarded in May of this last year. Maple Elementary received the Missouri Schoolwide Positive Behavior Incentive Award for Excellence for the fifth straight year. And this is the fifth straight year they have earned the highest recognition, which is gold. This is a result of the amazing staff that focuses on building unity and a strong sense of belonging for all of their students each day. Would Dr. John and her other staff members please stand to be recognized? And one of the things I think about when I think about the positive behavior support award is it's the really the motto of it takes a village. And I think Maple Elementary does a tremendous job of exemplifying that. So I would like and invite all of you to come up and shake the hands of the board members. And then if you guys wouldn't mind to stay for a picture, that would be very appreciated.
Since you can start with me. I'm not a board member, but I want to share it because I'm proud of you guys. Nice stuff. Congratulations for coming in such a great. Really.
Oh, congratulations.
Good job. Good to see you again.
Congratulations.
Represent.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Speech, speech. It is.
Maybe you can't get much better.
So how long? You guys are welcome. Yes, you guys are welcome to go. Yeah, Taylor, no pressure, huh? Five years in a row. Just a couple of general comments. Our principals, and they're gonna share more about this, did a tremendous job of welcoming, welcoming back our building staff last week, last week. And I know I said it in July, but I want to reiterate it. Our custodial, maintenance, and technology staffs. Did an amazing job making sure we were ready for day one, um, whether that was putting text in every building leading up. To make sure our teachers had everything that they needed, um, being extremely responsive over the last two days to making sure our student issues because. To be honest, some of these students have not opened that computer. Since they walked out the door in May and they may have had some issues. They've, they've done a tremendous job. Our grounds looked amazing. Our floors looked amazing. Thanks to all your groups Ian. Uh, back to school was yesterday. Felt like the vibe, the energy, the culture, our parent, our families were very happy that the kids came back, maybe more so than. Than we were ready for, but it was a great, great, great first day. And. One of the things that always occurs is there's some challenges with transportation. There's some challenges with food service. I was. Really knock on wood amazed how smooth the day went overall. We did have a bus that. They have took the wrong turn off ninety-two. Scenic route, took the scenic route, right? Uh, but it really, really good first day, excited for the next two. Everything gets smoother each day. And want to thank everyone that was able to attend convocation. You saw the energy from our staff and the spirit stick is a very sought after. Award. So he's, yeah. He decided to see what. A little bit like the Hunger Games. Want to thank the board for coming in this evening at five to, to review the feedback. Uh, of the goals that we developed based on the June meeting. If there's additional feedback, please let us know. And thank you for taking the opportunity to. Walk through the high school. Monica, thank you so much for being our tour guide and Vanna Wyatt, as you pointed everything out. Um, two kind of general updates, neither occurring this month, both in September. Our transportation ribbon cutting will be September twenty-fifth. We will have an open house from five thirty to seven thirty. We will have a ribbon cutting at six thirty and we will have light refreshments for anyone that would like to come. Um, we'll do the big scissors and all that fun stuff that comes with it. So please get it on your calendars.
What was the time again?
Five thirty to seven thirty. Open house ribbon cutting thinking at six thirty. Lastly, we are in Clay County, which is considered a charter or first-class county. So we do not adopt our. Tax rate until September. While most school districts are doing that during this month's meeting, we will do it next month. Our early information from Platt, Clay, and Clinton Counties, we're in all three counties, we have received post-board of equalization. From Platt and Clay Counties. Just as a percentage, you would think that that's great. We're two of three. That's only ten percent of our total funds that come in at the county. And local level. Ninety percent of our funds come from Clay County. We do not anticipate receiving those, that information until the beginning of next month. Uh, will we post and make a recommendation at that time? Early indicators show very strong returns in Clinton County, very over eight percent in Platt County as far as our. Evaluation growth and under two percent in Clay County, significantly smaller. Uh, part of that is a direct, a piece that is. With the data center, there was a piece that was part of commercial property last year with the current metadata center. That is now part of the pilot payment. It's a five million dollar piece of land. You want to get into the details. Um, but with Clay County coming down, as you guys know, for the last six years, we've been rolling our tax rate back. Our tax levy back, sorry, not rate, tax levy back based on a Hancock Amendment. This year, we will probably have the opportunity to roll it up on the operating side. When you roll it back, it is always operational. That you bring it back, but we may have the opportunity to roll that up because our assessed valuation in Clay County is so low.
And then next year, we'll probably roll it back down.
Yeah, n- next year will be a reassessment year. Those are usually years, uh, they're, they're examples where it wasn't, but are usually years where. Where districts in Missouri, you have to roll it back based on the Hancock Amendment. So. Uh, just preliminary information. Again, we will bring that to you in September for consideration and make a recommendation for you guys.
Um, and just real brief, um, yeah, Ms. Larry, thank you very much for the tour this evening. And thank you, board members, for, uh, taking the time to, to take the tour of the high school. Uh, and I also wanted to say, I've only been on the board for a couple of years, but this does seem like a, a very smooth opening of the school year. So. Pretty excited with that. Uh, we've had some stories in the past that administration has to handle. And, uh, it's, it's been fairly smooth and quiet. Quiet is good. So. I just wanted to say thank you, guys. You guys did a great job.
Knock on wood. Everyone knock on. The other, um, group that I did want to introduce is PJ and Denise have worked with our building principals. To share a little bit about how bringing back staff and students were. So they, uh, if you guys are. Willing to have them share, they would love to share a little bit about their back-to-school experience with both staff and students. And I don't know who drew the short straw, but if not Melinda, or. Who gets to go first? Who has the microphone?
So I was told to talk about excitement. So of course, um, we are excited about learning that's taking place inside and outside of the classroom with some of our real-world learning opportunities and internships. We have a lot of students who are being connected with that, and that's been a great, um, opportunity moving into this year. And so we're seeing some of that come to light. I said, watching, uh, our warrior time, we revamped it this year and using it for some RTI and different things with structures. And I'm, we're excited to, we rolled that out and it's organized. And it seems to be going well in the first couple of days. And, um, we're excited to see how that is going to play out. Um, we're excited for our clubs and activities to get back, um, in action and sports and, and that kind of stuff and see our, our kids doing the things that they love to do. Um, for Smithville High School. Um, and happy, a happy or fun, um, story. I was thinking hard about this, but there wasn't. A specific thing that came to my mind. However, um, I did see a lot of laughter, hugs, like with students, seeing each other, coming back into the building. Happy to see their, their teachers and adults. And so that was very, um, fun to watch. Here, we heard a lot of talk about. Travel over the summer and camps that, uh, kids have, you know, attended and different things. So that's always fun to. Hear, uh, what our students are doing when they're not at school. And then, um, I think the final one was just the tone of the building. And honestly, the tone of the high school was very excited, um, happy. Laughter. I felt like, um, I heard a lot from our staff about the organization of bringing, of how our meetings and things went for back to school. So. Just a great kickoff to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and we're excited to see what happens with everything this year.
Thanks, Monica. At the middle school, um, I would say it was just a great start to the school year. It was amazing, um. Bringing back, uh, all but two of our teachers. It was really awesome because we could just build upon what we have already accomplished and. And we didn't have to do a lot of relearning or reteaching. And it was, it was just a, it was just a great start to the school year. It was wonderful to see the kids coming back in, the energy they had. Um, not only the kids' smiles and excitement, but their teachers welcoming them. We just have such an amazing staff. We do a great job of that. And. That's just wonderful to be part of that. Um, I'd also echo Monica's sentiments. We started off our fall sports and, uh, at the middle school, and we had. Close to fifty, uh, middle school girls try out for volleyball and eighty-four middle schoolers going out for football. That's. Uh, you know, to see those numbers and to see that participation and that involvement, uh, we're also gonna start up many other opportunities for our kids as the year goes on. So we're excited about that. I guess I'm gonna share a story because I love talking about stories, but, uh. Uh, a few days before school started, we have a, a young eighth grader who sent me an email and. He, he put in his email, he goes, Mr. Winnebago, I, I just can't wait for next Tuesday. I am missing everybody. I miss the teachers. I miss my. Fellow students. I love the middle school. I can't wait to get back. And he goes, I feel like I'm a jet plane without fuel. And he goes, I just don't know if I'll make it. And he concluded the email by. Dear, near and dear to my heart by saying, um, yours truly, fellow Def Leppard lover. So. I love that. But I'm gonna continue with the story because it even gets better. So then he comes, he comes to school, he missed back to school night. And, um, he comes to school to do a tour with his dad. And, um, one of our teachers asks him, so did you do anything great this summer? And, uh, he, he looks at everyone and goes, yeah, I had a birthday party and thirteen middle schoolers, students came to my party. And, uh, like a typical middle school boy, he turned and they were all girls. So that, that was pretty awesome. But, um, as he went to go put some stuff away, we saw his dad had tears in his eyes. And, um, so his, his dad shared that this young man moved to the school, not moved to Smithville not too, too long ago. And just said, this was the first time in this young man's life that students actually showed up for his birthday party. And, uh, I'm gonna choke up, but, uh, it, uh. It just made me, you know, just really appreciate. How amazing of our students they are and how special it is. And it makes me want to come to work every day and energizes me. And just to know that that's the kind of students we have, that these students went to this young man's party over the summer. And just made his day and made his summer. And, um, that's just what it means to be a Smithville Warrior. So. That's a little bit about our back to school.
I will do my best not to bring you to tears. Um, so I think, you know, being a first-time head principal and being in a new building. You know, one thing I had heard kind of over and over was like the Maple family, it's such a family atmosphere. When, as soon as you walk in the building, it just feels like. This big group of people that just love and care about each other so much. And so, um, you know, I've been hearing that and hearing that and hearing that. And it was so nice on. Um, Thursday last week when kids were back in the building to be like, yep, here they are. And this, that's exactly how it felt. It felt so right to have them back in the building again. Um, everyone was smiling. They were happy. Um, you could tell they were just ready to be back with their people. And that just was really nice to see. Um, my, my kind of funny story, I guess, from Thursday night last week was, um, you know, from last year to this year. About probably seventy-five, eighty percent of the rooms at Maple have changed from where they were last year because of the addition of Warrior Preschool, which we're so excited to have. Um, that's a side note, having the little three and four-year-olds walking in little lines down your hall. It brings. Absolute joy to my heart these last two days. They are adorable and they're wonderful. And I'm so happy to have them. Um, but, so we had a lot of changes as far as where people are located in the building. And so, you know, on back to school night, you kind of have like your welcoming brigade at the front door, um, there to help hand out maps and direct people, welcome them to the school for the day. Um, and so one of the first questions you ask when, when families walk in the door is. Are you, do you know where you're headed? Do you know where your child's teacher is? And, um, there were quite a few, uh, seasoned Maple students that were like, yeah, I got this. I know exactly, like. I'm a third grader, like, come on up. I've been here. And, uh, you could kind of see like, you're like, okay, cool. That's great. And then they get about halfway down the first hall and you could kind of see them slow down. And like take a couple of looks and be like. This is not how I left it. Um, and turn right back around and be like, actually, I don't know where I'm going. Like they were in Twilight Zone. They had no idea. So that was kind of funny. We would kind of, as soon as someone walked in, we'd be like. I just can't, they're coming back. Um, and then it just got even better this week when we were back really for, for day one, um, of school yesterday. Just having everyone back, seeing, um. Kids run to their teachers from last year. So excited to see them. Um, we, you know, Maple kind of has like a circle and kids like to do like the hello laugh when they get there in the morning and say hi to everybody. Um, and so it, it's just been energies great. Um, staff are excited to be there. They're ready to, you know, dive into the school year and get going. And, um, yeah, it's just been a fantastic start.
Okay, well, Horizon, we'll start back with, um, bringing teachers back. They were very excited to come back and start the year. Um, we had great first day staff meetings. Um, lots of celebrations, lots of excitement. Uh, we celebrated our map scores. That was a huge accomplishment. We were able to, um, I know that they have been historically well, not overall, but we have some really strong parts. Um, but they challenged themselves each year to increase that. And so it was exciting for them to see growth in the areas that they. Had already done well in, and then the areas, you know, you hear then the conversations of what can we do to make it even better next year? Or, you know, those conversations taking place. So. Um, that drives, you know, a lot of the building is just having our students be successful. Uh, moving forward to meet the teacher night, uh, students were excited to come back. Staff was extremely excited for students to return. I think that was probably the biggest excitement of the year. Is welcoming all of our kids back. We had, uh, four hundred and eleven families show up. So ninety-two percent of our families came to back to school night. In fact. Sixth grade had a hundred percent in two of the three classrooms, which, you know, the older they get, sometimes they don't always come back. So that was very exciting. Um, and then a, a couple of funny stories and, and one to celebrate is. Kindergarten, you know, they do, uh, a boot camp, a PBIS boot camp, everyone, the whole building does. And they take turns going to different places and. What the expectations are, walking in the hallway, sitting in the cafeteria, going out to recess. And, you know, kindergarten is herding kittens for the first month of school. It just is. I don't, I don't care. I bless our kindergarten teachers. They are amazing. Of what they can accomplish in just a short amount of time. And so, um, the first day of school, they all meet on the playground and parents say goodbye. And then we do a boohoo yahoo breakfast with kindergarten parents after arrival, just because it's very difficult on most of them as well to part ways. And kindergarten teachers walk them in. And I mean, just the lines going in, I'm like, oh my, count, count three times. Do we have them all? Because they're all over the place. And. So the first day they go out to recess and recess monitors blow the whistle to line them up, knowing what is about to happen. You know, they're not gonna listen. They're gonna be all over the place. All of them sat down in their rows and their. You know, they're not going to listen. They're going to be all over the place. All of them sat down in their rows and their lines silent. And this is the first time, the monitor said, this is the first time in three years this has ever happened with any grade level. And it was our kindergartners. So that was very exciting. Kind of another funny story-ish, same first day, we decided we're doing all student-led announcements this year, which we've incorporated those in the past, but not every single day. So day one, student-led announcements, I call, you know, I'd already talked sixth grade, Bailey Hyatt, please send me one of your students to do announcements. She prepped them a little bit. I had everything scripted out, so you just have to read it. And all kindergarten parents are waiting in the caf, or in the gym. Everyone's listening. It's the first day. The student starts reading the announcements and then realizes that he has missed a section. And so his response was, oh crap, on the announcements. And he looks at me and I'm like, it's okay, just keep going, just keep going. But I'm like, that just kind of set the tone. Then I was like, oh, but, so I asked Nicole Johnson, who was in the caf, or in the gym with kindergarten parents. I said, what happened in there? And she said, they all laughed. It was okay. They took it. So it, it's been a great back to school and, and we're ready, we're ready to get going now. So.
Okay. If I may, can I comment about the district before I do my school? Okay.
Yeah.
You got the mic? All right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I'd like everybody to stand. Let's dance. Okay. I just have to say that this district and this town, it's, it's just something special. I didn't know Smithville from, I don't know. I, I didn't, I didn't know anything about Smithville. And when I saw the job posted, I thought, I better drive through there and just kind of see. And just the town alone, I fell in love with. But then I get in contact, or I don't get in contact, they get in contact with me, Denise and Kim. And I was sold. Just, I mean, those two ladies, the way they treated me, the way they contacted me and also their assistants. It, it was just, it felt so good because I come from a district where I've been there for 33 years. And so it, it's scary starting something new, but to be, to begin with something like this. So then I come in and I get to meet Doc. And then it gets even better. And, you know, I'm starting with PJ and, and then Anna's new, we're all sitting in the new chairs getting, I guess, acquainted with everyone and what's going on. And then I meet all these wonderful, wonderful coworkers. I've been given grace. I've been given help. Technology has been out of this world. Sped has come in. They'll answer anything I have. Mindy has just been wonderful with all of, it just, I could go on and on about what a great district you guys have built here. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of that. So with that said, I was extremely excited to start the year. And I already love the staff. I don't even know all their names yet. But it, you know, there's been a lot of change. Some of the sixth graders said to me, you're my fourth principal. And it's like, yep. I said, but your little kindergarten brother here, I'm going to try to get him all the way through. So hopefully I'm, we're going to try real hard on my second year, not to have anything happen. So it won't be a two, two, two. But so my heart is with Smithville and with the kids. So teachers, they were so good on the end service day. We did some role playing with discipline. And some of the teachers that I think the others know was like real soft and soft spoken. Maybe had an incident where they had to do something that maybe they haven't seen. Yeah, don't you think? Yeah. It was kind of fun to see them act out some of the scenarios. So, you know, we really want to build culture in our building. We want, I told, I told the staff and they agreed, if you have a child's heart, you have a child's mind. So that is kind of our goal. That's where we want to move to. And I believe we're all in it together. Don't you? Yeah. Okay. Putting you on the spot. Funny stories, there's a couple that I, I won't share, but there's a couple that I can. When you work with Justin, oh, that's the other one. Dustin, I'll tell you what, he, I don't know if I could have made it without him. He, he was so good to me. He has stepped up. He has been absolutely amazing. And so I, I can't thank him enough. And he knows that. There was a little kindergartner today that told his teacher, I had a really good day today. But I'm not going to come quite as long tomorrow. I wanted to go find him and say, me too buddy. But anyway, just thank you for letting me be a part of this district. It's going to be an amazing year. I can't wait to get to know everyone. And I don't know, we'll see what happens.
That's all we had. If you guys have questions for our building leaders, please feel free. If you want more stories and remedy, so I'm sure they have them.
That was awesome. Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Next up, Executive Director of Operations and Safety.
Follow that. My stories are blood, sweat and tears right now.
Just to reiterate what Dr. Moss said, it's not lost on me that Randy, Scott, several others across this table. And then our building leadership teams have had to help onboard a brand new director of operations, executive director of operations. So thank you for the grace and patience because as I give you some of these updates, there are going to be pain points related with some of that infrastructure. But really appreciate them. Couldn't have done it without them. And I had, couldn't quite get over why everyone kept asking me if I'm okay, if I'm okay. Well, the reality is the speed at which we start schools is incredible. So it was a, it was an indoctrination by fire. Couldn't have done it without some of these people in the room. So I appreciate it. But to kick off, Randy, if you'll pull up the bond construction status report and share that, please. Long story short, you know, from a financial perspective, we are right at the end of closing all of our stuff out. So what I provided to you guys in an update that you saw was about a week old. The transportation facility, we're punching out this week. As we start looking at our HVAC, all of our low voltage controls, VAV, construction work has been accomplished. Now we have aspects of issues unrelated to that, that I'll dive into when I get into some of our maintenance report. The big piece that I wanted to bring up on our radar, and as Randy goes through this, we'll show some pictures and stuff, is really the middle school, the middle school field. We finished Maple pushed in, our Maple Playground pushed into our start of school. And we just wrapped it up yesterday with, with the start of school. The other one that's still ongoing is, is kind of a consideration for us to work through is with respects to the track around the middle school field. We're at a point in time where Jay Dunn has worked with the installation company and the architect to find a resolution that they feel they want to do several mockups with and kind of play with the composition of their mixtures to see what might produce the best results. As we get through that, they were out there doing that today. And the plan is to actually test and look at some of those aspects on Friday. Okay. A part of that consideration to keep that project moving forward and the conversations I've had with Jay Dunn is there, there is a cost contingency that we've had, we, we've had to adjust and pay for. That's 18,000 for the material. The installation company has came through and pretty much taken on the cost considerations of about 63,000 actually, resolved this issue within terms of the mixture. So we're still actively working through that. I don't have a great notion of what it looks like until we see the mockups. And I'll, I'll provide that to you guys in a, in a board memo and keep you guys updated. But that is the true aspect of our projects that's kind of lagging behind for final completion. Every other aspect of our completion initiative, our projects initiatives, we, we have kind of really got through. We're punching out transportation center this week. I did take back to some of you who have reached out, I have asked Jay Dunn to reach back out to our company for the vinyl on the wall to see if there's any considerations where they'd help us might replace that. So I'm hoping to have that feedback next week. We just shared that with them in our Tuesday meeting. So any questions around that, as we go through that, you'll see some of the updates. And then I'm going to jump into the kind of the rest of the capital project updates and kind of give you guys just a quick deeper overview. Okay? Talk about the middle school turf, the gym turned out gorgeous. If you, most of you have been through it already. The multi-purpose studio room, absolutely gorgeous. We were able through cost savings and chain orders to process the east wall and get that updated. And the HVAC, as I spoke to the middle school and Horizon, the VAV's done, we are having, we had issues with several of our RT units, our rooftop units across some of our buildings. The high school, last update I got from Scott has been resolved as of yesterday. Eagle for the majority has been resolved. We are still facing issues at Horizon and our middle school, which happens to be from the RTUs under warranty within the last two years. So some of those parts, we're working with Jay Dunn to see if they're under warranty for repair or not. And some of that changes. So if it's a compressor, they have three-year warranty. If it's a control board, it might only be a year. So they're trying to help us go through that. We're trying to push them as fast as we can. But Christie, I'm sorry, hang in there with me. But we tried to get all that updated on, on, on their group. So.
Are you saying that's some of our newer units at Horizon?
Within the last two years, yeah. So within our last two years, everything's got from a control board to leaking freon out of our compressor. Everything in between. So we're trying to work with Jay Dunn under warranty so we can move that along. And some of that's manufacturer warranty versus installation warranty. And that's what we're diving through with Jay Dunn. That's why there's a little bit of a day, a delay with getting the RTUs, especially at Horizon up and running as fast as we can.
So how many units at Horizon are working properly?
I can tell you how many, the easier question might be, how many are not?
That might be the easier question.
I have four, four units that are impacted right now. One that is not controllable, but running at normal state at Horizon is what I got currently going right now. Yep. Great question. So my, my intent is to give you guys Friday updates. I worked hard with Scott this week to loop in all of our building leadership team. So we can create a kind of a dialogue. So they were getting fed from both ends. I wanted them to see Jay Dunn's response to and put us all on one communication platform. So we've worked hard to close that loop. So we can start to paint a timeline for them. But we're, we're going to push pretty hard on that side. Other capital projects outside of the bond initiative, we had our Maple HVAC project, which allowed us, you know, adequate heating and cooling for the gymnasium. That, that work has been completed. We're just waiting for low voltage controls. So we can actually see it from the front end. The Maple Playground, as stated, we just got that done Tuesday and we're finalizing landscape right now around that perimeter. Couldn't thank Durham Bus Partners more. I mean, if you guys haven't had the chance to meet Alyssa or Mike Reynolds, guys, when I talk about, I thought I was putting in some long hours. Alyssa called me at 10:30 on a Saturday night, trying to still get all the kids routed. Now, we absolutely did experience some turbulence and, and worked through those, but they have been committed to doing that. And every time I've been notified, they have made it a priority to take care of that family. So I appreciate them. Even, you know, taking the time out of their day to come meet with me and Andre to work through some special requests and stuff like that. So they have truly been incredible and they're, they're grinding. They're in there trying to make it right and make sure those routes get as smooth as they can. An update from the maintenance perspective, like I say, couldn't have done it without these guys. The amount of work orders and I, I've learned now back to school night and the amount of volume of work prior to back to school night is a real thing. Randy and Scott's teams, their ability to get in, I think, I don't remember how many large furniture moves we had, Christie, but I won't, I won't, I won't mention any furniture thief in here. But we had some large volumes of furniture that had to be moved very quickly and it was incredible. They did a great job. Some of the key projects that's still sitting from a maintenance perspective, from a deferred standpoint are surface slots. We have two, our lighting and surface slots, two bids on, waiting on one more to process. So we can get our lighting back up in our surface slots. Some other key ones, working to repair some issues with some of our concession stands, re-roofing the trailers. And then the middle school ladies restroom partitioning, those are all in the project list for our maintenance crew to start tackling as now that school's starting to settle in, those would be some of the priorities. You know, conversations with Randy and working with our technology team, Randy's been hard getting school ready to start and kind of systems, you know, ready for all staff utilization across the board, power school implementation. The big piece we're going to work on that we're going to start considering on how, how we better inform you guys is looking at our software, hardware, end of life expectancy. So we can start to forecast those financial pictures and needs across time. So I'll be expecting more to come on that. Those are some of the big updates that I have from my end. That's a lot. Questions, what questions do we have?
So on the middle school field, when you look at the original bid package, and this is a pretty good example for the board. You know, when, we talked a lot, we talked a lot about it on this bond project, but there's always at the bottom of those bid packages, construction contingency and construction manager fee with this surface issue on the track. That's what we have that contingency in there for. But to couple back to you and, and obviously there's, you know, there's a lot of people involved, given in America, DLR and Jay Dunn, from a responsibility standpoint. I know that we'll eat out of that contingency for this surface. But, you know, for me, that, that construction manager fee, you know, the reason we go with the construction manager, because it's not always necessary is to, for them to pick up these problems before they happen, to bridge the lack of resource that we have as a district to manage those. And so for me, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little disappointed that, I'm happy that they're finding a resolution for us. It just would have been nice, since we went this path of the construction management side, that this sort of problem would have been caught by them as the construction manager prior to landing on our plate.
Yeah. Patrick and I have a pretty extensive background from this side. So just kind of to give you guys some of the context of how we got here, right? Long story is, you have an installation company and you have an architectural firm. The architectural firm develops the design and considerations and stamps them for approval for installation. Well, what has happened is the installation company came in and said, hey, I have a spec from our manufacturer that's favorable and we like it. They shared that with the architectural firm and the architectural firm stamped it and said, absolutely, that's rock and roll. And as a result, you know, Jay Dunn's position and I think where they're kind of stuck in a hard place is really related to, well, we had a submittal and we had it approved from the architectural firm. So from a design theory, it was okay to install. That's where they're stuck. I've pushed on them pretty hard that, you know, our take is, is that this should have been done appropriately with the original spec. I don't wholeheartedly feel it's fair to say, okay, we have to eat cost contingency. But I have been on the other side of these conversations with my prior job and I have seen something very similar held up in litigation for a year and a half. And I don't want that either. So then it's in consideration as 18K out of our cost contingencies worth delaying any further progress on the middle school track. My recommendation to you would be no. Okay? So that's, and, but I, I'm, I'm here to serve at the pleasure of the board and kind of the directive as you guys see fit to Dr. Moss. And, and so as we articulate what that means to you guys in our district, let me know.
Just to be clear, our contract is, is with the architectural firm.
And installation, both of them.
And the installation. That's who our contract is.
Correct. Yep.
And they approved it.
Correct.
Is this to take our track back to the existing, what we, just what we had?
To get it back to a usable rock foundation surface that we can utilize. Yep.
Yeah. What was the extra cost that we thought that I can't, it doesn't matter. I was just thinking about like, what was the extra cost to make it a track that would be a usable? That's usable, but not.
So.
That's helping Dr. Moss out.
There are two things. One is I don't find an asphalt track usable. If you've ran track, if you've done that, that is not fair on an athlete's legs. It's not what they're conditioned to. The asphalt alone was $200,000. It's about 200 to 250,000 on top of that to rubberize and stripe it.
So you have to do the asphalt and you do the rubber.
Under, undersell. Okay.
Three, four inches.
I agree. Okay. I can't remember. Thanks. Yeah.
About $600,000 project.
And they don't negotiate without litigation?
Well, so like you pointed out, the installer is eating all of the labor, right? Labor and the equipment.
So that's their negotiation portion?
The installer came forward and said, hey, we wanted to commit to the labor and equipment costs, which equates to just north of 60,000.
And what is DLR willing to do?
As, as of right now, DLR's position is, is we provide an original spec. You guys didn't follow it.
Although they, although they signed off on.
So I think we have an opportunity to continue to have that conversation with Jay Dunn. Jay Dunn's position is they want to keep this process moving forward so they can get us a usable surface safe. You know, if anyone was around this evening, you saw our little, our littles playing on the field. They love to play in the big sand blocks where we're at. I would be happy to continue to work with DLR, Jay Dunn and Mid-America to say, you know, how do we continue to get to a better resolution of cost structure? You know, how do we continue to get to a better resolution of cost structure?
Well, I think, uh. At least from my perspective, and I know a couple other board members have voiced their concern, I think. The contract with DLR is worth, uh, looking at after this project is wrapped up with this bond. Um, I think we need to reconsider our relationship going forward, but that's a conversation that we can have.
And I would agree with the safety, um, like my son's had to practice over there, um, for soccer and. He said it's a mess to get to there and if one of them falls off, I mean, I just think of eighteen thousand versus one of our students. Getting hurt worse to me, that, that's a big thing, yeah.
Yeah, so obviously the expectation with having this reagent added to that material is that will. Harden surface. The only unknown would be the expectation of longevity, right?
Yep, and I've, I've asked them. Uh, for what I would say is a reasonable expectation on a rock type foundation, and for me, that's three to five years. And they're wanting to finish this mockup and kind of circle back to what that means to them. So a little more to come. We're not quite all the way through it yet, but. There's a, there's a path forward and my recommendation to you guys would be that we use that eighteen K contingency to keep moving.
Certainly the eighteen thousand would be cheaper than the asphalt, even the asphalt option to a hard usable surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that was the only, there's a lot of good there, so don't focus on. What we're asking all these questions, there's a lot of good things happening here, so.
On the positive, uh, can you give us an update on the, uh, Turner Construction relationship?
Uh, absolutely.
Was it his Turner Construction?
Turner, yeah, they, they were incredible. So they were processing all the labor work for Meta. And the construction just to the south of us. Um, they hit a lull in their timeline, project timeline. And so they wanted to keep their labor trades engaged and, uh, a part of that project initiative, they have a community enhancement engagement. Forum, if you will, where I'm not sure how the mechanism funds all that labor. But there is a structure there and they got to reach out and. They engaged us and thank you to Denise and Dr. Moss for plugging me in with that information, but. Um, they were able to come through and rebuild some, I would say, some pretty dis-repaired decks on some of our trailers. Uh, they did those quickly, they painted and redid. Uh, three of the trailers doors, that's in process. They pulled all the old screens off. And through the next few weeks, their plan is to patch some of the siding on those. The trailers I'm referencing, sorry, middle school. Uh, the two trailers at middle school and the one at Maple, they're gonna patch and repair the siding and paint them and reseal them. So all at no cost as of right now to the district. We, we offered to, hey. I said, let me know what material looks like if we need to pitch in on material. And I haven't, as of right now, they've covered all the materials themselves, so. Been an absolutely incredible partner from that standpoint. We appreciate all, all that they have done.
That's amazing, great. Is that pretty much it for you? I was gonna say, we have some coffee back there, so. All right, uh, next up, ten point O, old business.
Yeah, you see before your, your general financial review, it's looked the same as it has the previous months. It's tracking fairly normally. Uh, the one thing I would share is Karen and I have started looking at some other districts and see if there's other ways to represent this information. And so we're looking at that to try to think, I don't, I would not anticipate anything changing in the next couple of months. But we may have some mockups for you guys to review to see if it would be. I hate to say more meaningful, but maybe a better way to represent the data.
Any questions? Okay. Next up, eleven point one. Approved or it's a board policy KC, community engagement. This is, uh, for the first of three readings.
This, this was a policy that was adopted. In June of twenty twenty-three due to a new state statute. At that time, the board adopted the policy as they thought it would be implemented. Uh, last year, as I shared earlier during the workshop, there were some revisions made. That impacted our goals and what our outcomes were for that, which then impacts the policy. Uh, we shared just some very general, uh, revisions, trying to make it fairly broad. And then allowing the board to come in and determine what, how, how deep they wanted to get in detail. Happy to answer any questions regarding it. Again, it's just an initial reading for those of you, uh. To review, ask any questions about, we'd be happy to clarify. We did look at it as a administrative team.
No, I'm, uh, happy to see we're getting this back to. A more, uh. Not necessarily generic, more in line with our goals and priorities.
Do we wait for a motion? Discussion, or do you want to see discussion?
Yes, um, so this is the first of three readings, so what we could do is we can have a motion to approve. The first of three readings for board policy KC. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a. Let's discuss.
Okay.
All right, where's yours?
A part of the, um, board and superintendent goal was to be purposeful and transparent in communication. When I reviewed the revisions of policy KC. Um, it looks like it eliminates a lot of that, um. For the community and our stakeholders, so. Um, a lot of the yellow that you see, if you have the agenda. I don't know why we're broadly removing some of these things. I don't really agree with it.
Do you want to be more specific?
Yeah. Well, all of it. Anything that's in the yellow, it kind of goes against our purposeful and transparent communication that we talked about. And, uh, eliminating some of those, I don't, I mean, we've eliminated a lot of things. And we talked about even today when, when we were having discussions, um, in our workshop. One of the things that even Whitney had brought up was like a newsletter, but this is eliminating newsletters. It's eliminating social media.
Doesn't eliminate it. It opens us up to not be so specific to where we have to meet. Exactly what this says. It opens us up, makes it adaptable and makes it something that can be a living and breathe, more living and breathing instead of. Well, we said this and we found a different way of doing it. Now we don't want to do that, but it's in our policy, so now we're locked in.
So, yeah.
It's not gonna eliminate those things. It's just gonna, it's, it's removing it from a policy, so the policy is not specific to those things.
But the policy is what guides the board.
Yeah.
And that's a part of our transparency to the community and so. You know, when I looked at, like. I, I've looked through the policies like B C when it talks about. The purpose of committees and stuff. And one of the things that I'd asked for. Was a policy committee which can be appointed at the president with board approval and I, I don't feel like there's support in that. At least most people. Didn't seem to have supported that, but. You know, the purpose is to, you know, I'm very analytical and I like to dissect things out of risk management mind, so the purpose of me asking for a policy committee. Um, wasn't to. It was to be able to dissect some of our policies. Some of these are ten, fifteen years old and I don't think that they're relevant today and so. Going through, you know, being tasked to review the policies and make sure they're relevant and accurate and. Consistent to follow the transparency, to find out the why we have the policies and make some adjustments alongside of administration was. More of the purpose that maybe I didn't articulate as well. We as a board have a lot of policies. We could go through three a meeting, but I think that would be exhaustive. That's why. Usually have a policy person that just kind of works with administration to dissect and make sure these things are relevant. Um, same with the MSBA delegate. I mean, MSBA. Is the one we get the directive for some of these four, so I think it's important. So I just don't agree with the revisions as they stand. I think it removes too much for us to be aligned with our goals.
Okay, and just, just to clarify real quick, the, the revisions, uh, is under informing. Uh, we have regular board meetings, board workshops, community newsletter and social media.
Will continue to.
Those will continue.
Those will all.
So like eliminating from the policy takes this policy. From where it's written now as a hardline playbook that constricts us to being able to. Maneuver and change and, for instance, last year, we went to the MSBA. We got a lot of conference, we've got a lot of good ideas. But because this policy was so strict, it doesn't allow you to navigate that change. Whereas now, eliminating this stuff creates it from a hardline playbook. To a guide, which is what a policy should be. It should be guiding, so. For instance, this policy is saying that we're gonna continue to inform the public. Now, to what methods we use to inform the public, this policy currently is written restricts us to how we can do that. If we remove the restrictions, it allows us to guide and say that we will continue to inform the community. On objectives and understanding of the problems and alternatives and solutions. It, it, it still allows for that to happen. It just allows it to be a guide instead of a hardline stance of what we have, what we have to do.
Do we have a procedure that goes against this? I see it from both sides a little bit. I, I, I see it what, why we're doing that because we did get caught. I mean, we did, we put this down, we didn't do it. But sometimes when, sometimes not putting stuff down. We forget about them, we don't do it. I mean, it doesn't hold, hold us accountable, so I see where Joe is coming from that way. But I didn't know, sometimes we have policies and then we have procedures that are actually what things are done, so. I didn't know, that was my thought. I mean, I understand why we're trying to keep it broad, but to me, we, we take it out. Everything.
So these, these things in yellow, in my opinion. Fall more. A goals and objectives as opposed to a policy. So as we work on our goals and objectives as a board and administration. If we wanted. Policy KC, community engagement, if that was one of our five goals that we're focused on. Then we would take this policy and the things, a lot of the things that are in yellow would become goals. And would become actions. And I don't feel like, in my opinion, those actions fall in policy, they fall into goals and.
And that's what I want to make sure is there somewhere, right? That's what I am saying is I just, we gotta make, and we gotta make sure that that's. Showed the people too, because if we just showed them this, they're gonna go, yeah, they're not doing anything. They're just, they're.
Well, I'd, I'd make, make sure that we're not saying that we're not doing anything. We do every single one of these.
Oh, we do. Uh, no, we do. Yeah, I, I personally know, but I could just see as a, as a. Person in the community, if I got this, oh, they're gonna inform me. I'm, I'm trying to think the devil's advocate. I'm playing both sides, because I see both sides.
I mean, for instance, A, under informing, it's regular board meetings. We're, are we, we're not gonna stop doing regular board meetings, right? And we'll continue to do it whether it's in the policy or not.
Right, right.
So then removing it doesn't do anything other than remove accountability, but maybe a line put in.
How would it remove accountability though?
Because you're not able to go back and say, hey, you guys aren't doing these things as a board. And we are the stakeholders, we, we pay the taxes and we want to make sure that the board is being transparent. It's a part of our goal broadly.
But that would fall under goals and not policy, right?
No, the goals that we have is to be part of the, right now, our, this is our policy.
Right.
Is our community engagement plan. And so I don't see, you know, you can add a line in there that says. And any other activity as the board approves, and it doesn't remove these things. I agree with removing the coffee on Saturdays because nobody committed to doing that. That got adopted last year was probably a great. Idea and it just wasn't able to happen for scheduling or whatever. Um, but that I don't have a problem with removing, because I can still go have coffee with whoever I want to. I don't need a policy to do that.
And so, that's a great example, because, you know, like us as a board and a district, we don't need a policy. To go do coffee with the community. We don't need the policy to tell us we're doing that. Nor do we need a policy to say we're, we have to have regular board meetings. So the way this, by changing the, the changes. The way this policy will read is that we will inform the public and provide the community with balance and objective information. It says we will consult. Obtaining community feedback on analysis, alternatives, so we still have all of the commitments that we want to have in there. With, with regards to community. It says we're gonna inform the community, says we're gonna consult the community, says we're gonna engage the community and we're gonna collaborate with the community. That's what this policy is changing now, I mean. And that's, in my opinion, that's what a policy, policy should be. It should be a guide. It should say, we are committing to doing these things with the community. How we do that. Is on your goals, it's not your policy. The actual actions don't, don't rest in a policy. They rest in some sort of goal or actionable plan.
Well, I, I think. Um, your, your point of goals, this does kind of read like more, these are more like goals.
Yeah.
Which we adopt and we change on a annual basis. However, they somehow, uh, were put into a policy. And so we are looking for flexibility and the fact that like last year, it's the, the color. You know, the fun, the walk and run, like.
That's nowhere in.
That's nowhere in here and it wouldn't allow us to do that if it was this restrictive, right? I, I think there was an art show that we ended up. Doing, uh, and I think there was an event with the seniors, so. This policy was brought up so we can broaden. Uh, uh, our engagement with our community and, and further that transparency with them, so.
This doesn't say restricted or limited to, which is why it's easy to add a line to this that says, and any other engagements as the board approves. Would not eliminate this because it does, it looks like, okay, now we're not gonna do workshops, meetings. No more newsletters, social media, forget it. There's no accountability, but you can, it's not restrictive. It's not saying this is it, that's all you can do.
If you list, if you list all of these and then say not limited to or among other things. Then you're.
Can't say among other, I'm not saying.
Well, that's what I was, like, you're not including every possible scenario, like, these are examples of way we can. Execute this community engagement. If we're not including every particular example, how we can do that.
They don't have to. It's not restrictive because it's not saying we're limited to.
So if we don't have to include every example, why include these four specifically?
Because it leaves some accountability of what the expectation.
But you hold your, your goals accountable, which is where your actions rest.
Is there any way to put the goals not in here, but I'm just trying to think.
Maybe like we're.
Stay, we're linking these to our.
I would say most of these were in the holes that we discussed earlier. What if we put, uh, saying as it ties into our goals as a district?
Yeah.
Yeah, the goals are always, they're, they're always changing, so what if.
And that's why the goals.
Is the board. This isn't lacking adaption. If you add a line that says, and any other engagement as the board approves. I understand it. No limitation.
The reason this came up was because coffee with the community was in it, so it is restrictive because we're. We had to come back to it because there's something in here that didn't come to fruition.
And I'm fine with removing the four A because there was scheduling problems. I'm saying it doesn't look good. To remove. A lot of these things. I mean, the coffee I can see, but.
Can I say something frequently? Board policies are more general and then you'll have a corresponding procedure. And form that goes along with those policies. So could you incorporate the goals and the procedure or form?
And those procedures, forms of goals would not require three readings in ninety days, so. If we wanted to log all of our actionable items in a policy. Let's say we wanted to do a color. Well, if we're using our policies to dictate what we can do and don't do. You're looking at ninety days till we can go after that, because you have to have three readings to enact a policy or change a policy.
Not if you have the one line that says, and any other engagements. As approved by the board, those aren't required readings.
So then why?
It's language in there.
But with that line, we don't need these other four.
It provides accountability to such to the public, the stakeholders of this community. We're willing, we're at minimum. This is our minimum that we are going to do for you all. But there's other things that we can and will be doing and we don't, it's just the board, it's as the board pivots, those things.
But that accountability rests in our goals and priorities because we're held accountable.
Those are just too informed, too.
Those aren't too.
These is what dictates.
So we don't hold ourselves accountable to our goals and priorities?
You, we should, but.
Right, so that's where we would hold our.
The policy as well holds the boards accountable.
The policy is what guides our goals and priorities.
So. So just real, real quick, um, Joe, where would you put that one sentence?
Um, probably after community engagement plan will clearly. Be articulated purpose. Of the following engagement and then you can put anything, even at the end. And all, any other plans as directed by the board. And or administration, if you wanted to work administration, then it doesn't limit. If Dr. Moss or, you know, one of the principals want to have a community engagement. At their schools, it allows that pivot, but it just provides some flexibility and gives the. The public our accountability.
Okay.
But I do agree with removing the coffee. Because we've been in violation of our board policy this whole time, and so I do agree with removing that to prevent that violation.
So.
Let's see.
So this is what, the first of three readings, okay? So. Where, which, so you were to pick one of two spots, you gave me two spots to put that sentence. If we were to put that sentence in there, right? Because we will come back to this next month. We can put that sentence in there that you would like. And then the third reading is the final adoption, okay? And then the board will decide if they would like that sentence in there, if they would not, if the board would like any of these items removed or not. So that all will transpire on the third reading.
So then I would say after the first paragraph, the board will annually review and adopt the community engagement plan in collaboration with community.
After the first sentence in the first paragraph?
I thought it was the last sentence.
Right before the last sentence in the first paragraph. You can either put it where it says the board will annually review and adopt the community engagement plan.
And then put a one line, you know, these, these plans are not limited, but. Can be modified with the board approval or administration, something to that effect, I don't.
Karen, do you have that?
I wrote, these plans are not limited, but can be modified with board approval. Or even administration, I would have no problem with, you know, if one of the principals said, hey, we wanna have a parking lot. Party to engage the community, well, I don't think they need to wait for a board meeting to do that, I think administration can. Dr. Moss should be able to say, yeah, it sounds great, that's good community engagement, let's do it.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, we will put that sentence in?
Uh, after the last sentence in that first.
After the last sentence, and we'll assign it a different color, because the yellow color is, is for the. Uh, removal right now, right, so. And then that will come back for the second of three.
And then I would leave the rest of the yellow except for four A, I would remove that.
Well, we'll, we'll leave four A until the final, final edits will happen in the final reading.
Vote on the third time.
Yes, so then someone's gonna come up into and make sure that that stays in. Uh, four A, for instance, if they would like it in or if they would like it removed, that will be at the time that they make that. So we'll do that on reading three.
But didn't we earlier discuss or something about the key communicator session, they're not even gonna be called that? Or they're not gonna be used, so that wouldn't stay.
We use the session.
The only thing I'm asking to be removed is for A, the coffee, the Saturday coffees.
Right.
Everything else, I would say the yellows need to not be yellow.
But to your point, I think, um, Ms. Perkins is just saying we need to make sure that, um. Because we call it key communicator sessions, again, something that is. We've had lots of discussion around it, very specific, lots of people don't like the titles, right, so. That is, for instance, another change that would possibly happen.
But that sentence would allow us to pivot and make those modifications.
So are we good with this discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question, I, it, it, I mean, but, so it reviews the, that last. Uh, par, that sentence did say the board will annually review and adopt the community engagement plan. Is this the community engagement plan or it's something else?
This is proposed, no.
Okay, so I think that just needs to be clarified, because that's gonna be talked about yearly, I mean, right?
This portion of KC is called the community engagement plan. So the, this policy in particular is one that we would want to review annually.
Okay, there's the, because it's part of a bigger policy.
There is.
There's more to it.
Yes, there's more to KC than just that. I think if you look at the top. I mentioned that this is only the community engagement plan and below the, the.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Other portion of KC is above that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll bring forth, um, policy KC. Next month for the second of three readings and we will make that change. So we have a motion and a second.
What's our motion?
To approve the first of three readings. What the, are we gonna make them, are we gonna modify the motion? Do we wanna clarify that?
Um, I can, we can modify the motion to say, um.
To include the sentence.
To include the sentence, yes. And I would also further modify to remove four, four A.
It's already on there.
It says yellow, it's already to be.
So we have a, a motion on the floor to modify, do we have a motion on the floor to modify?
Approve MSBA policy KC for the first of three readings with the sentence added to the first paragraph.
Do we have that motion? Do we have a second?
I don't, I'm not sure that we have to do a second motion.
Second motion, yeah, because we did one motion.
Yeah, we already got a first and a second.
The discussion would end, so now.
We just put on the modified.
Yeah, uh-huh. We only have one motion for that. We could make another motion to approve it as pre, or as revised.
So are we gonna make a motion to approve the revised? Is that what you're asking?
That's the motion on the table.
That, there's that motion on the table, so we have to vote for that before we do another.
No, once you modify, you vote on the modification, okay?
Yep, so, so are you saying a second or not a second?
Do a second, um, motion.
On the revised.
Revised, yeah.
So you'd make a, the motion would be to approve MSBA policy updates for KC.
As modified.
But other than that one sentence, it's the other way that we've seen.
And again, the final edit and the final vote is at the third reading.
I don't, I don't know that I agree with that, I think you can modify it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be included, the sentence will be included next time you see the second reading.
But I think you can modify how it's written now.
So what are you wanting to do?
What I'm saying is I think you can, you can, you can not just add to it, but you can ask for. Cause right now, I'm not gonna vote for it the way it stands, cause you're asking for me to remove all the yellow, which I think. Affects our transparency and I don't agree with that, so I can't vote to approve that as it stands with all the yellow in there.
So would you like to make a different motion?
Well, I, I've tried, but. My understanding is we're, I'm, I'm not going to be removing the yellow by the time we meet next month. I just wanted for the record that what. Until we finally vote on that.
The policy, the policy's not changing until the third meeting.
I understand that's the final, but this is where you start modifying policy. And so my motion is to leave the policy intact with the exception of removing four A. And adding a sentence that allows the board or administration to pivot to add to the policy.
So your motion is to amend the changes to only add the sentence you would like and only remove four A?
Correct.
That's your motion.
Yes, correct.
So is there a second?
Okay, just for clarification purposes, there will be three readings of this, this is not a final.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So.
So her motion is to, for the next reading, to include her sentence. Amend the removals to just four A, leaving everything.
So that is Joe's motion on the floor. Do we have a second for that motion?
So who was the first then?
Do we have a second? Given that we don't have a second, the motion does not carry.
I would make a motion to include Johanna's sentence. And, uh, pass. Approve board policy KC community engagement for the first of three readings as written with the modification added, adding the sentence.
To clarify, this motion on the floor is to add Ms. Pruitt's sentence and to keep the modification that exists. So that's the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, this will be brought up next month, so please vote. Okay, much encouraged. Next up. Eleven point two.
Thank you, Ms. President. Each year, MSBA, who provides our board policy, will send revisions on a regular basis. This happens to be the second revision of the year, this is the first of three readings. Please note that all revisions within this policy that you see in there, several in there. Were provided by MSBA with none of our modifications or suggestions from the administrative level, so. Um, all, I did create, I did leave a snippet of what their letter was, I believe that letter's also, is that letter in the.
The, the whole letter is not here, no.
The whole letter, but that version is, the only thing that they mentioned this does not change any revised forms. Probably the largest change that they made is if approved in two months, this would remove policy FFA. Because that policy is now under a different policy, so. Again, the first three readings, all MSBA recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Just for clarity, I thought you said that there are some things that you did change, no?
No, nothing in there. Any of the strikeouts or highlights, that is all from MSBA, that's the way it usually comes when you see them from them.
Okay, so, to move on to discussion. Um, do we have a motion to approve the MSBA twenty twenty-four B board policy updates for the first of three readings? We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please discuss. Is there any discussion for the first of three readings for MSBA recommendations?
I have a clear, I want to clarify something. Uh, there are several things that I saw in here that I have questions on, would it be more appropriate to ask MSBA if you did not write these?
Yeah, there's, yes, there are several times that during this discussion. Karen will take the notes and then we'll reach back out to MSBA for clarification. Uh, we do, and then bring that back to the entire board. We can provide those updates through the Friday update and not wait. For the thirty days for next month's meeting, if you guys do have things you would like us to clarify.
Do you have something? Cause I'm totally interested if you have some changes.
Time and everyone's annoying, so I'll just circle back to MSBA and I'll come back.
Well, my understanding is that you guys would go to MSBA.
You can as well.
I'd go to MSBA.
Right, but I just wanna know what your question is.
It's okay, there's, there's nine policies to review, so it's okay.
But the trouble is that we've taken out of your.
I'm not removing you guys, I'm just saying I, I want some clarification before I make, make it a deal that may not be a deal. So I'll just circle back to MSBA.
Okay, for the sake of transparency.
I'm a very transparent person, probably more than.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to have this conversation out.
I just, I appreciate your input, Johanna, and so if you do have something you, you wanna change or you think it doesn't make sense. I, I would like to hear.
Cause there's sometimes staff here can help us.
We've had former board members that have, um, come up with some great recommendations and it has, but we have. To communicate it through administration, which communicates it back to MSBA and vice versa and back through, so we make sure that everybody. In our organization is on the same.
But if you go to MSBA and they, they think that what you're saying or what you're questioning is legitimate.
Well, they're sure you'll communicate to.
They're not gonna change anything for me, I'm just gonna clarify that there is a change that they think is relevant, so I'll circle back with Mark and.
And then you can bring that to the second reading?
That'd be great. So we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion on? MSBA twenty twenty-four B board policy updates. If there's no further discussion, please vote. Great, okay, motion passes. Okay, eleven point three, Board of Education Committees. This was a conversation that, uh, has taken place through the board retreat workshops. And, uh, assignment of committees going forward. We have discussed prior to this, so, uh, the committees that are. We'll start at the top. We have MSBA delegates, we have a primary and an alternate. I think it was decided that Ms. Perkins would be a, um, primary and. Uh, Ms. Pruitt would be the alternate on MSBA delegates. Uh, Karen, real quick question, do we need to vote as a whole or do we need to vote by each committee assignment?
I think we can make a single motion.
Make a single motion after I go down, that would be, is everybody okay with that? Okay, just wanna make sure. So, um, the next committee is, uh, District Wellness Committee, uh, is Ms. Whitaker. Uh, the next one is Community in Action, that'd be Ms. Cudd. Finance Committee, uh, being Mr. Nichols, Ms. Cudd, and Mr. Jacoby. Um, Smithville Education Foundation, uh, Mr. Jacoby. Uh, Ms. Whitaker and, uh, Ms. Carlisle's an alternate. Is that correct? That, whatever that remembers.
Did you say the last one again, the Education Foundation?
Education Foundation, uh, Mr. Jacoby, uh, Ms. Whitaker, and, uh, Ms. Carlisle's an alternate. Are you good, Karen? Do we have a motion to approve the board committee assignments? So we have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, please vote.
I just wanna make sure that Brooke and I are both publicly committing to policy BCCA, which is the MSK delegate and alternate. We want this sort of fire of our possessions, so I just wanna, because our positions are policy driven. So I wanna make sure that if you don't have time, that you've reviewed that and we're all in agreement that we're able to do this.
I would, yeah, I think that's just under the assumption that MSBA delegate would be up to. When they abide by that policy, so. More discussion on board news. Okay, if no further discussion, uh, please vote. Okay, motion passes. Eleven four, Board of Education calendar considerations.
Yes, I shared several events that occur on a regular basis that the board engages in. And that you guys all do a tremendous job of doing your best to be there, and I shared corresponding dates or from last year. Or dates that could potentially work this year, and then just general timeframes. If we hadn't had a real standing piece over the last two years, so. Uh, this is usually done by discussion, if you guys would rather, um, I could work with Karen and we could send out different calendars or calendars. For you guys to potentially respond to, but sometimes in this meeting where you guys all have your calendars out and are looking at your future, you can help us.
Can you keep, uh, or add these or keep these, uh, at the bottom of your Friday?
Once they're decided, we'll plug them all in.
Yes, sir.
And the other, the other thing that we were asked to plug in, in that our building principals will, will get asked. Next Thursday is that the PTO and MSPG group meetings, and we'll plug those in as well to that Friday update.
And um further clarification on this is we have had those instances to have a, to leave it up to the board to kind of report back to administration what days and that doesn't really work. Uh so if you don't mind uh pulling out your calendars, if we can knock out at least a couple of these uh in, in the discussion, that would be very helpful for everybody. In November, we have Board of Education building walkthroughs. So what we can do is we can really kind of knock out everything prior to Christmas, I would say, and maybe up to the board, Board Recognition Dinner. So I think we try to take that little chunk there.
Yep.
Uh so building walkthroughs in November. Um did we want to?
The board.
How we want to do that?
Twenty.
Board meeting is the twentieth.
The super long day, but.
Did we kind of want to do it on the same day as the board?
I don't remember how we did it last year. Did we do that?
Been a one and.
It was not.
I'm okay with this long day thing.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's either blow one day up than to blow up.
I just know. I'll for sure.
Oh yeah, I just mean for your calendars, like I have a great day with every day, but.
You know, I'm done with it. Okay, good.
Okay, and for the new board members, building walkthroughs, we would start uh mid morning sometime, then we drink for lunch and then we end the afternoon. And then obviously we have that little gap between what the board meeting starts.
We actually did it the Tuesday before the boot, board meeting.
Tuesday before.
Is that what we did?
Yes, yeah.
Is there a preference that we would do it on the same day as the board meeting?
I would be open to do it.
That kind of.
I think.
Susan's point, it's easier to just knock it out. For me, I know.
Worked too.
I think that, I think for everybody's person, I mean, for the respect of everybody's time, does that kind of make sense for everybody? So we are November twentieth. That was real easy.
And what time did you take?
We'll send you guys out a calendar invite. We usually let our secondary schools get started fifteen, thirty minutes in. We'll meet here, travel along this campus, and then we usually carpool to lunch and then hit the other two elementaries that afternoon.
So nine o'clock is the safe.
Eight thirty-nine.
Somewhere.
Okay, that was easy.
Okay, that one was very easy. Okay, let's go to a harder one. Turkey handouts. So.
It's going to depend on teachers too. I mean, the staff, I mean, that's, that's a date that.
So.
So the turkey handouts for, is, is a tradition that we've done farlile. Um.
Just ask for.
For the staff um for the holidays. So it's after Thanksgiving typically and before Christmas, right? So um.
And the last two years have been aligned to the board meeting. So come in that afternoon for the two forty-five handout, two thirty handout at, at both the middle school and the high school. Then we kind of re-break up, go to those elementaries, and then it rolls into that evening if that's what you guys would like to.
But the board meeting is the eighteenth?
The eleventh.
What time? And I think last year too, hey Brooke, last year we were able to choose what worked for our schedule. So like there was a time for the middle school, high school, obviously it's earlier than the elementary school, but you were able to choose what worked best for your schedule.
And you most likely, what you most likely would not do a turkey handout at every school. You'll just kind of pick a school or two or three if possible.
Oh.
And you don't have to come to every, I mean, this is obviously nice to try, but if there is.
Right, correct. As Ms. Whitaker said, if you can't make it, you can't make it. But we will still mark you down, so.
It's still get credit.
It's still good.
Yeah, it goes with your style then. Okay, so the board meeting is December eleventh. Are we good with that? Okay, turkey handout. On the eleventh, so that was an easy conversation too. Board of Education Recognition Dinner, an elementary portrait of a graduate recognition. This is typically done in the last part of January. And I want to say maybe on a Monday or Tuesday if I remember.
Really going to depend on the staff when they can, cause they have to get their nights and everything.
So should we wait until we hear one from?
Yeah.
They're right here, is.
Typically have done, I think the very last Monday was last year, but it can be flexible, but that was.
And we need to make sure with elementary kids that we kind of wrap it up at an earlier time for at least elementary level, but somehow we got to.
We did it, we did it different last year though, where we did the elementaries at night and then we went to the high school and the middle school during the day.
I like.
During their school day. It was good.
That's correct.
That's where we got mauled in the um, in the game at the high school.
That's where you have your work comp.
Yes, yeah.
And the one thing we will do this year is also schedule the board recognition dinner thirty minutes earlier because we did get squeezed on time. We'll probably start that at five this year. Start the recognition with the elementaries at six thirty, which last year it was right under an hour.
The Board of Recognition Dinner, that was great. And hopefully we can build on that. Um the Board of Education.
Did you say the twenty, the last Monday is twenty?
That's what it was.
The corresponding day.
Yeah, it was last month.
The twenty seventh.
So January twenty seventh is what it looks like.
And what time is it?
Saying, there's.
Nothing's on the calendar.
Okay, that's what I was going to make sure you guys are the one. Right, right. You'll schedule with us to come whenever it works best for yours. Yep.
Right. And then we'll do high school recognition during the day. Is that how we're going to want to do it again this year?
Thought it was good. I thought that worked well and.
Is it the same day?
Was that good for you guys?
Oh, okay.
And it'll be in the middle of the day and there, most board, some board members just won't be.
Oh.
So. So, so to clarify, Board of Recognition or Board of Education Recognition Dinner is on the same night as the elementary recognition. And that'll be the first Monday of, or last Monday of January. We will decide at a later date what the high school one is. Right?
We usually.
I just have a great date off the top.
Yeah, we, we usually align those to one of their assemblies. And as soon as they're ready to share those, I'm confident Todd, Monica and Scott will get that.
Board Candidate Workshop. That is typically as that, uh that was in November, last week of November after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, last year was, was that it felt a little late. To be perfectly honest, I think the years before it's been, and it hasn't been many years that it's been held, but years before it's been kind of the week before Thanksgiving. Just as a reference, last year it just conflicted out that we couldn't do it that third week. And this year, the last week of November is Thanksgiving. So nineteen, twentieth, twenty-first November, the twentieth is our board meeting. We could also do it the week before that.
Any recommendations for the Board Candidate Workshop?
Was there a day that was better, like to avoid practices or church or something and people?
Usually not a lot of people attend this, so.
Yeah, we've, we've had two and threes.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's all. Like an information.
Didn't come in for information.
They mainly ask the board members a lot of questions about what's the time commitment, would, help me with pace, help me with pattern, because I would just share that there's a perception that you show up once a month on a Wednesday and that's your commitment versus what it really looks like with the amount of information that you're.
Yeah, they need to.
Okay, so how about just since you said throughout some dates, we have the board meeting on the twentieth, how about um the nineteenth for Board Workshop?
Tuesday.
That work?
What time?
Usually six thirty or seven.
Six thirty.
You guys tell us.
I'm open. Six thirty is great. It'll be getting dark then.
Okay.
It'll be really dark.
That'll be when you start leaving, it's dark and you come back, it's still dark.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, we got some dates that actually is, removes a very time consuming exercise. So thank you guys for taking the, the ten minutes to do this, so. I don't.
Well, for listening.
Uh that's just info on collection, correct? Okay, so on to eleven point five.
And if, if the board does not mind, uh would you guys be okay if our principals were allowed to go home so they can get ready for our kids tomorrow? Thank you guys so much for sharing this evening. Have a great evening.
The candidate?
Appreciate everybody being here today. Thanks for being here for your first meeting.
Yeah.
We expect a, a report every month.
More stories.
I always wondered why they, yeah. November. November nineteen.
So I was always like, there's a lot of people. No.
Yeah, is there actually?
Okay, so thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
All right, eleven point five, uh MSBA Policy DFI two, setting the tuition for district programs. This is something that we do annually and it's typically based off of uh our ASBR. And whenever administration has that ASBR, is ready to do the calculations, that's what this is typically based off of. But I, I think it explains that here. There's some more explanation in the memo, so.
And I would also share that this is separate from MSBA Policy twenty twenty-four B that has this policy as a revision as well. The only thing we are recommending this evening is what we are required to do per policy, which is set our tuition rate. Um if you look at the bottom of the memo, you will also notice that this is a requirement per state statute. And each year we update that. Um Karen had updated our ASBR and has submitted it, so we had, we felt good about uh providing the number. It's a number that changes each year based on our expenditures and attendance for our peoples.
So this just formally sets the tuition if we were to charge it to twelve thousand. And who decides who gets to, who has to pay tuition?
The, this policy, this is what the state requires us to allow a student to come in and pay tuition for. So it's actually the state that requires it within this policy.
But do we actually charge? I mean, do we have students currently here that are being charged tuition?
So this policy, no, we do not. This policy in particular is the state has required all districts to accept tuition students based on certain parameters. DF, DF I dash two is that policy of how you would be required to accept certain students, yes.
So we're not modifying the policy. We're just setting the tuition as a result of the policy mandate.
Got it.
And this is a first and only read. So this is just an annual thing that happens. Um so just to move to discussion, do I have a motion on the floor to approve MSBA Policy D, DFI dash two?
Submit.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Please discuss. Do we have any discuss? Do we have any further discussion from what we just talked about? Okay, if not, please vote. Okay, motion is approved. Eleven point six, uh approval of Excelsior Springs Tuition Contract. Do we want to have discussion now or after?
But I can tell you while you're seeing it again, uh after approval last month, we wanted to add a line for the board president to sign. That line was missing from the original draft, so we wanted to make sure it was technicalities.
So that was the only revision?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor to approve Excelsior Springs Tuition Contract?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any more discussion, any more clarification? If not, please vote. Next up, eleven point seven. Approval of the Missouri State Dual Credit Agreement.
Yep, this would be a renewal of an annual agreement we have with Missouri State University. So students can uh enroll in dual credit classes. When they approached us again this year to renew, they threw in some statistics, which I added on the memo. Hundred and eighty-nine students last year completed a total of one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven credit hours in fifteen dual credit classes and enjoyed a savings of two hundred seventy-seven thousand and three dollars. It's no cost to the district to renew this.
Are there any other universities that do this or just?
We do. We have several.
Multiple, multiple Truman, uh Northwest Missouri State's very popular. We have classes with University of Central Missouri, Missouri Western. Not as many, UMKC and Bull Transparency also doesn't necessarily branch out as much to the smaller school districts. They focus a lot on inside Kansas City, Missouri, inside KCK. We will break down that partnership though, by the way. They're awesome. So many tremendous programs.
Recommendation would be to approve this agreement and I expect more as they come through.
We have a motion to approve the Missouri State Dual Credit Agreements as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Any motion passes. Next up, eleven point eight. We have eleven point eight, like, right? Okay, that is approve updated Durham Bus Service Contract.
Uh you guys have the memo and sheet. I'm happy to inter, you might have.
We have a motion to approve the updated Durham Bus Service Contract.
Submit.
As presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Karen?
That Whitney said, yeah.
Let me have a second. Do we have any clarification or other discussion on this, on the Durham Bus Service Contract? If not, please vote. Okay, motion passes. That's it? Okay.
Back for.
Twelve point one, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion for a second. Please vote. And then we are going to go back into executives.
We didn't do it.
Didn't do safety and security.
We only, we only did the personnel recommendation so that we could vote on. Yes.
Thank you.